Well, you gotta give me A for effort.
Well, welcome to City Hall. We'll get started this morning with our invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I'll ask Councilman Brian Walters to lead us in the invocation and Councilman Pat Ryan to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But everyone, please stand.
Bow your heads, please. Father God, we count it as an honor to be able to stand in this place, Lord, and serve the people of Oklahoma City. Lord, I pray that we will not take that for granted. We will remember who put us here. And, Father, serve not only you but the citizens with all of our heart and with integrity above any measure. Father, we just ask that we have wisdom today. We thank you for what you're sending on the cross for us. And we pray for all the men and women around the world serving in our armed forces, Father, who in harm's way. And we just ask that you'll just keep them safe and bring them home to their families as quickly as possible. May we pray, men?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, each month, the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club helps us allow our honor an Employee of the Month. I'll ask Ronald Robinson to come forward. Ronald works in General Services Department, the Fleet Services Division. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get scheduled.
Whereas Ronald Robinson has been a city employee for 29 years and is a fuel systems technician in the Fleet Services Division of the General Services Department. Whereas Ronald Robinson operates a tanker truck and wet hoses to fuel vehicles from the truck, monitors the level of the two 10,000 gallon fuel tanks at the central maintenance facility, and delivers fuel to the fire stations. Whereas Ronald preserves through icy weather, pouring rain, and the summer heat to provide fuel service to city fire stations. Ronald is dependable, reliable, provides great customer service, and is always willing to go the extra mile to make sure his job gets done. Whereas Ronald Robinson seeks solutions and opportunities to rise above and overcome obstacles, always looking at things in a positive light, and ensuring his duties to the fire department are covered and services maintained. Whereas Ronald Robinson is a positive influence on everyone he comes in contact with by projecting an attitude of gratitude, and has been overheard saying he loves his job and he appreciates working for the city of Oklahoma City. Whereas his council desires to recognize Ronald Robinson for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Ronald Robinson, July 2010, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Let's show our appreciation to Ronald and his coworkers. Thanks very much, Ronald. Well, actually, the applause is genuine, but we haven't voted yet. So, I mean, we actually, you're not out of the woods yet here. How about a motion? All right, let's cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Ronald, congratulations once again. I want to thank the Kiwanis Club for helping us out. And there are over 4,000 employees working for the city of Oklahoma City. It's quite an honor. And I want to thank you and your coworkers and supervisors who came down here to support you today. All right. Once again, let's show our appreciation. We're also joined today by the fire chief from Lawton. Bart Hadley is here. He's the vice president of the Oklahoma Fire Chiefs Association. Why don't you just bring everybody up? He's here to honor our chief, Keith Bryant.
All right, thank you. I'm Bart Hadley, from, I'm fire chief from the city of Lawton. I'm also the current president of the Oklahoma Fire Chiefs Association. I've got two of my board members here, Mike Clifton and Kent Legali. We recently honored your fire chief with a special award that we'd like to present to him publicly today. The nomination, excuse me, I just turned 50, so I might have to put my glasses on to read this. So... The nomination, the nominee is an outstanding leader in the Oklahoma Fire Service. His leadership is always implemented with the best interest of his department and its members in mind. He takes a progressive stance when it comes to the safety of his personnel and leads by example. He is a strong advocate for proper fitness, hydration, conditioning, and nutrition among his troops. He found ways to ensure the safety of his personnel by obtaining funding to purchase new bunker gear for all department members, and included a repair, tracking, and cleaning program in the purchase. He established a committee of well-rounded individuals and personally participated to guarantee the best possible bunker gear available. Through this process, his department was one of the first in the country to implement the newest technology in this gear. This gear has already seen trial by fire and actually saved several individuals from burns in a flashover situation. He has also implemented reinforced and practices seatbelt policies for all department members. Under his leadership, the department has undergone top-quality, high-rise, and RIT training. His administration skills are progressive in that he completely utilizes abilities of his command staff and department members to the fullest. He allows input from all levels and listens to that input. He is consistently searching for the latest and best ideas from around the world to use in ways to better his department. Many chief officers throughout his department and throughout the state, myself included, seek his leadership on a regular basis. Most that are considered leaders in the fire service themselves learn from his guidance and wisdom. He truly exemplifies progressive leadership at its best. The Oklahoma State Fire Chiefs Association has a proclamation, whereas the Oklahoma Fire Chiefs Association supports and promotes progressive management and leadership in the fire service within the state of Oklahoma, and whereas it is important to pause and bring special attention to those chief officers who demonstrate outstanding leadership, and whereas the J. Ray Pinch Chief Leadership Award is established to recognize actions and activities of chief officers that produce progressive improvements in safety, efficiency, effectiveness in the areas of fire prevention, fire suppression, and fire administration that are outstanding in nature or impact. Whereas this individual has proven that his skills, knowledge, and leadership abilities have had a dramatic positive impact on his department. Therefore be it resolved that I, Bart Hadley, president of Oklahoma Fire Chiefs Association, and Chris Bane, executive director of the Oklahoma Fire Chiefs Association, do hereby proclaim G. Keith Bryant, Oklahoma City Fire Department, the recipient of the 2010 J. Ray Pinch Chief Leadership Award, and witness hereup. Thank you. We also have a proclamation from the governor that we'll present to him as well. Thank you, sir.
And chief, I know your family's here. If you want to have them stand up. Stand up?
Two of them, anyway.
Yeah. Thank you all for coming down today. Chief, we're very proud of you. Thank you. And thank you all for coming to Oklahoma City.
I really do want to appreciate Bart and the rest of the board members of being here today and bringing this before council. But, and again, it was a great honor to win this, really because it, the nomination, you know, came from, and this election was made by my peers in the state here. And then that meant quite a bit to me, too, to be recognized by the people that I respect so much. But really, the truth is that, you know, this award is really just reflective of the great work of the men and women of our department. And if it wasn't for them and their dedication, you know, it'd make my job a lot harder. But again, they do great work. I'm blessed to be a part of this department. And I think, again, this is another reflection of just the examples of leadership and the mentoring that I've had during my career in the department. So, again, it's a great honor and appreciate you guys coming in today and doing this. Appreciate it.
I don't know why he kept looking over his shoulder. I'd like to take credit for mentorship over the years with Keith, but I'd have to say Keith earned most of that on his own. He's done a good job. You know, you're really getting old when you were around when the current Oklahoma City chief got hired and you worked with the father of the current president of the Chiefs Association. Craig and I had many good times together working through the state issues on fire service. But congratulations, as well learned.
We're on item 4B, or make it 3B of the council agenda. It's the appointment of Stephen Tannenbaum to the Board of Directors for the Port Authority for the greater Oklahoma City area. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes on item 3B. Passed unanimously. On to item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for June 29th, and item B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for both June 15th and the 22nd. All right, cast your votes on item four. And it passed unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Just sworn this morning on page 20, under item 8G1, page 20, under unsecured, item E, 1732 Northeast 23rd Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner is now secured.
That's it, huh?
That's it.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll assess the council meeting. Convene is Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. All right, we have a motion in a second. There are eight items.
Your Honor, just a quick question on A. I wonder if we have any sense of the timing of that particular project here?
Councilman, I spoke with Dennis last week, and he said at the present time, we are waiting on a recommendation from our consultant as to exactly how we're going to stage the equipment to do the improvement. So, at this time, I don't have, you know, a firm start date on that project, but we are working on it with the consultant to determine exactly how we're going to make those improvements.
Paul, do you think it would be this year?
I would anticipate that it would probably be later this fall, because right now, all we're doing is awarding the contract for the final plans.
I understand. And nobody will try to hold you to that, except for anybody else who watches on television. But this, the boxman answer is fine.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we're ready to vote on the MFA. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. At journo, see MFA, convene is Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are five items. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the PPA?
Our question on C, which has to do with some refinancing, restatement of some bonds, and the maximum principal amount of the note is continued going down for the history. Is that because we're paying it off or actually reducing the amount of money we think has been required?
I don't know the answer to that. It has, the principal is going down. I would guess it's more market-driven, but maybe Brent Bryant or Kathy O'Connor can come in and answer that question for us.
I think it's great that the principal's going down. I was just curious as to why, whether it was, if we paid off some of it or actually saw a reduced need for money.
Brent Bryant, why is interest going down on the down note?
The principal's actually going down because we're paying down the principal each year as we receive TIF revenues in.
Good. That's a polite question. Thank you very much.
All right, we have a motion. We have a motion in a second on the PPA. Ready to vote. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. At journo, see PPA, and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations?
R.
R, Sam. And BD, okay.
A, 10, Your Honor, and D is in dog one.
What was the first one, Pat?
A, alpha, N.
Sam, you want to get started with R?
Thank you, Mayor. It's the item with regards to these bicentennial park improvements. It's very brief, a staff report, just landscape renovation, park design and sculpture, $3 million project. Could we get a little overview, or are we going to get that later?
Well, this is part of the Project 180 improvements that will be done, and this is to hire a consultant to help master plan that area. And so, we don't have any recommendations at this point. This is on the early stages.
Okay, okay. All right, and BD, Sam?
The other has to do with the maintenance and operation agreement at Crystal Lake Pershing Center that operates, or City Care that operates Pershing Center down near our, next to our fire prevention services, and also the operator for the citywide WIS kids. Received the RFP for the operation and maintenance of this lake. I just wanted to commend the work that they've done in the past, the investment they've made, City Care. In past years, they have taken large numbers of children every summer for probably eight to 10 years at Crystal Lake, and have made good, good use of that facility. I think that's one of the reasons it's come back up on the radar, the fine piece of real estate that we have out there. And now, we're in need of some maintenance and operation. RFPs went out and they were one of the bidders. I think with their workforce, it's City Care, I mean, at Pershing Center, it's just going to be a wonderful opportunity for their employees to help in the maintenance and operation. And I think we're blessed by this partnership, and I think we're going to, I think we're going to see improvements in wider use of that facility due to the arrangement with City Care. Just wanted to compliment them.
Pat, A10?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a renewable lease agreement for some motor graders. And I was curious as to if an economic analysis was done comparing lease to purchase. Leasing generally is at less advantage, there's less advantages to leasing sometimes than actual purchases unless the equipment is really specialized. And motor graders didn't seem to fit that category in my mind.
And so, again, Mr. Ryan, the question is?
Cost analysis. Cost analysis, lease versus purchase.
I don't know the answer to it. Paul?
This is a lease that the Public Works Department has been using for several years. I don't know specifically if any type of economic analysis has been done, you know, to determine, you know, whether a lease is better than a purchase. But this is something that we've been doing for 10-plus years. And it's a program where we use these pieces of equipment, you know, both in our street maintenance operation for rural road grading and as part of our drainage operations. We can check into that though and see. But I would imagine that, since it's been a long-term lease, that some analysis has been done, but I'll be happy to check on it.
We'll go back to you on a report. I wasn't questioning, you know, the need for the equipment at all. I was just concerned about the method we used to finance it.
Okay, you got item D, Pat?
Item D is a resolution authorizing open market purchase of airfare services. And I was curious, is the travel ban for city employees still in effect?
It is.
Do you anticipate it being in effect throughout the fiscal year?
Well, it is. There have been a few emergencies. We've had to, like, send some attorneys to federal courts in Denver, and we've had a few things like that. There are very, very few exceptions. Only been a handful this year. But there are some things that we do have to, have to travel for, and so, we do have the contract in place to accommodate that if needed.
Okay, so...
But the travel ban still is...
In general, the travel bans are for meetings and conventions.
All that stuff is, it's only for a few specialized trainings that we've had to do. And for, I do know that not too long ago, we had to send some attorneys to Denver for a court appearance. And so, we do have a few things like that, but they're rare.
Okay, so, because we've, you know, had a resolution, sort of mimicking your policy at the council level, and I was curious if it wasn't still in effect, and then we ought to need to look at our policy.
Right. It still isn't in effect. It's very rare that we're doing any traveling at this time.
And the $40,000, is that compared to last year, or is that just sort of an estimate?
That's just an open market authority.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket. There are two items. We have a motion in a second. Comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item eight, a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Eight. It's an ABC issue at 01 North May. Pat?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Is the owner represented here this morning? Did anybody sign up to speak on this one?
No, sir.
Okay. This is an ABC license in an area that there are a number of existing residents, restaurants, excuse me, that have ABC permits. It is consistent with the usage out in that area. There were no protesters. The planning commission recommended this application for approval. I would move approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8A1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward Two. It's also an ABC issue. The address is 6714 Northwestern. Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the location of the old Iguana Restaurant on Northwestern, and sat vacant for a couple of years. I believe the ABC lapsed, and new restaurant with ABC Two. I don't think there's any protests. No protests. The applicant's here if there's any questions, but I'd move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 8A2. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward Five. The address is 801 Southwest 66th Street. It's currently a single-family residential district, and it would become an R2 medium-low-density residential district. Bryant?
There were no protests. I took a look at it. It seems to be reasonable, so I'll move approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8A3. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A4 is in Ward Seven. The address is 120 Northeast 51st Street. It's currently R1 single-family residential and O2 general office. It would become an I2 moderate industrial district. Skip mentioned any problems with this issue to anyone else? Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? This is item 8A4, and the property is at 120 Northeast 51st Street.
Excuse me. Bob, do we get the easement?
Yes. All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes on item 8A4. Passed unanimously. Item 8A5 is in Ward Three. The address is 4401 South Sinclair Avenue. It's currently R1 single-family residential, R2 medium-low-density residential, a C3 community commercial district, and an AE2 airport environs overlay district, and it would become a PUD. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. As the applicant is represented here, I believe, today...
Yes, Warren Peacock, representing the applicant, Johnny Ray.
And, Council, we had some questions. Warren and I had some conversation yesterday driving back from Dallas. I'd like to tell you, I went to Dallas on a personal trip to look at RV storage along I-35, but that would be a little bit of a...
Well, maybe we'll set the standard for the city then.
We had talked about what the applicant planned to do as far as concreting the parking areas.
Yes, I talked to him yesterday after we discussed it, and he is planning on putting hard surface throughout the project. That will be all the parking areas, drives, all the outside storage, and then, of course, all of the bays will be hard surfaced with either concrete or asphalt. He doesn't know which way he's actually going to go yet. But it will all be hard surface, so there's not going to be any gravel areas or anything like that to create any dust problems or anything.
Good. Bob, do we need to, is that covered in here? I couldn't see where that was covered in there, right. Do we need to make an amendment to accomplish that, or?
The way it's written right now, it would require paving and all those...
It will require paving.
Right, so we don't need to make an amendment.
Okay. And then the other thing that we talked about, the bays where the units would be stored, they will have doors on, and it will come down.
Yes, they'll be all have overhead doors that'll be closed so that when everything is stored, they basically will be sealed up where you won't see anything.
Thank you, Warren. Unless the council has any questions, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8A5. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A6 is a zoning case in Ward Five. Property is near Southwest 89th Street and Southwestern. It's currently a PUD, and it would become a new PUD. Bryant?
I don't really have any issues with the concept of it, but I do have some access questions. This has been talked about for some time, and the question of access has come up numerous times. Who would, Jim, who would answer that question?
Bob can.
Okay. Bob, on the map, it doesn't seem to me that there's some kind of an easement to get back there, that they're relying on the use of the parking lot of the other property?
That's correct. During the planning commission discussion, that issue came up, and they redesigned their access point to allow the turning radiuses where an emergency, a fire truck can get back into the facility. They specifically designed it with our Public Works Department to meet those requirements. So, it's...
I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, on the map itself, it looks like that the, it looks like that the property is landlocked.
Well, they, they own the, they have rights to the furniture where the auto parts store is, so they have rights to go through their parking lot to access.
Okay. And then you did, you did hit on the second question, which was the access of the fire apparatus? On the, on the dock, on the map itself, it looks pretty close to me, but if, if the driver says they can get it in there, they can. But the question is, is this coming, it looks like that for them to get in and get out, they have to drive all the way around the entire thing, the entire outer perimeter of the property?
That's correct. They have to go in and go around, but they can make that maneuver.
Okay, so is there, as they go in and come around, as they're coming out, what is that black, what is the black box there in front of the fire engine?
The, where are you exactly?
Okay, if the, if you have a picture of the fire truck coming in, going north, it takes a left-hand turn, goes down to the end of the property, takes a right-hand turn, goes to the back of the property, goes all the way around the outskirts of the property, and it's coming back out, it looks to me that there's a building.
That, that designates that that area can't be used for parking.
Okay.
So, it's not a building. It's a, it's highlighting that there won't be parking spaces there.
Okay.
It does kind of look with, but it's a, it's just a identifier that that's, no parking's allowed there.
Okay. Was there sprinklers required, this build? Fire sprinklers inside the units?
It wasn't part of the rezoning. That would be a building permit issue. I think that, I don't think that they're required in, since there's no occupancy in storage facilities. But I can check that for you and get back with you.
Have we done another similar build anywhere in the city where there's, where it looks to be this kind of an access issue for a fire truck?
I'm sure there have been, but it's kind of unique. And this is a bypass parcel, and so, they were trying, I mean, looking for a use that would work here.
I guess what my concern is, is that it says it'll work on paper, and then when you actually put it on the ground, actually having the issue of actually being able to get the fire truck in there?
Before they'll be able to operate, we'll verify that they meet all the requirements for that access.
Okay.
But they did, they spent a lot of time designing this where those trucks could get in there, because that was an issue that came up in the planning commission.
Okay.
All right, with that, I move approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8A6. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A7 is in Ward Six. It's currently a simplified plan unit development and would become a new Spud. Meg?
Yes, the applicant is represented here today by Dean Dyes. And Dean, why don't you tell us a little bit about the project, if you don't mind?
Thank you. Approximately about a year ago, we came in and rezoned this property as a used car sales lot. And at that time, we had numerous people requesting a sales lot on that corner, but it never did come about, so it's been sitting there vacant all this time. And we were notified by a company out of state from Florida, a company called Ablebody, let's see, Yeah, Ablebody Labor Force. They're a commercial construction labor force company that finds labor on a daily basis for jobs all over from the city. And they were going to put in, like, four locations. They wanted this location real bad. So, had to come back in and rezone it again to give a use to it so that they could put their...
So, what we're adding here is just to allow for office?
Just allow for that one thing. Uh-huh. Not adding any extras at all.
Bob, there were a couple of issues. There's an easement that was required.
He has, he submitted the easement.
Submitted the easement today. Great. And at the planning department, there were no protesters present.
No, ma'am, no.
Given that, I would move approval unless anybody has any additional questions.
All right, we're voting on item 8A7. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to request emergency on this one, please.
All right, cast your votes. Emergency passes.
Thank you very much, Council. I appreciate it.
Item 8B deals with the color of the construction bar... Item 8C is a final hearing on the item restricting drive-through restaurants in Bricktown. All right? Anybody here wishing to speak on item 8C? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8D deals with parking during construction. Okay? All right, cast your votes on item 8D. Passed unanimously. Item 8E, I think we have a short presentation forthcoming, has to do with the 23rd Street overlay. I know Councilman Kelly has been working on this issue with our staff.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Counsel. This is at the request of Councilman Kelly, and we had inserted provisions in the northeast 23rd Street overlay regarding the outdoor storage of tires, and Councilman Kelly has requested that we extend that to the entire city. So the purpose really is about amending the regulations that relate to outdoor sales, display, and storage of tires, and this is fairly simple. Really, it prohibits the outdoor storage of tires now and sets hours for the outdoor sale of tires. So outdoor sale of tires would now be limited from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM in the evening. And there is a retroactive requirement on this, that owners will have six months to come into compliance with this new provision. It relates to all commercial districts, to the downtown district, to I-1, and then certain other light industrial uses, and these are basically outdoor or gasoline sales, and then also affects the 23rd Street uptown corridor overlay, which is the western portion of 23rd Street. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Russell, why wasn't the issue... I mean, this ordinance made effective throughout the entire city without any kind of restriction as far as particular district?
I'm sorry, Counsel?
Why wasn't the ordinance effective throughout the entire city?
Originally?
Right now, the revision.
Well, these are new provisions that relate to storage of tires outside.
I understand that, but would this apply, for instance, in Northwest 164th and West Street?
It will, yes.
It covers the entire city?
It does.
Okay, that's my question.
Within those districts?
Within those districts, it's a qualifier.
Well, those are the only districts you'd be able to do it in any case, so it does cover the entire city.
Okay. Well, there's no place in Oklahoma City where I could store tires outside.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Russell, I don't know this to be a fact, but places like Pet Boys, Tires Plus, are they open before 8:00?
I don't know.
Is this going to affect them, though? If they are, does this in some way... Would this in some way affect them? Or are they going to...
If they intended to have their tires for sale...
When? So if you have an established tire business that opens at 6:00 AM, does this affect their business operation?
That would affect their ability to be able to display tires for sale. They would not be able to do that according to the ordinance that's currently crafted until 8:00 AM.
Why was 8:00 AM chosen randomly?
I'm not sure. We didn't actually...
Well, I would hate for us to establish an ordinance that... Of course, I also have to look at the enforcement side of it. The chances of Tires Plus being cited for having tires outside at 7:00 AM are probably pretty slim, but in the same regard, I don't want that problem. If there would not be any opposition from your end, I would like to back that up to 6:00 AM just to make sure we cover those established business practices that those people have in place.
Okay. We can take that back. Municipal Counsel's Office crafted the ordinance, so we can take that back.
Can we just do the amendment here? Just change it to...
Well, this is the second hearing, final hearing.
Oh, is it? Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, Larry and then Sam?
Yeah, Russell, need some information here. A tire shop, does this cover the used tires also that have been taken off the vehicles? They can no longer be stored outside?
They can no longer be stored outside.
So both the new tires and the used tires, even if they're off to the side of the business where they can be... Like, you can see them from the street, they're outside. This would say you can't store those anymore outside.
That is correct, if they're not in an enclosed space.
Thank you, sir.
So tires are used for display and advertising. Say they're stacked up six wide and up to a point, they're permitted...
That would be permitted for sale of tires.
And they can stay up 24 hours?
No, from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM or if we modify that extent. Those would be the hours. It would be a set number of hours so that you would not be able to leave the tires out overnight.
Whether they were for advertising...
I think most of them bring them inside anyway, but...
All right, whether they were for advertising or not, they come in at night?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, I just want to make sure I heard the answer to Larry's question properly. If I own a tire store, and I'm in... Currently, I'm in the... Using the practice of stacking old tires off... That I take off cars in the back of my building...
Correct.
For the once-a-week, once-a-month pickup of the old tires, I can't do that anymore.
It does not make that distinction between front yard or backyard. It just says outdoor, so that would be correct.
And so then, Russell, following on that, what kind of enclosure? Does it have to be in a building? Will it be fenced or...
Within an enclosed building.
Within an enclosed building, okay.
Okay.
I think some of this relates to... I mean, certainly a part of this relates to the appearance of these facilities as they store tires outside. Some of it also relates to health and safety issues in terms of having the tires just piled up outside, and, you know, when it rains, you get a lot of water collects in those, so you get mosquito breeding as well.
All right. Well, Skip, your arrival is timely. We're discussing the 23rd Street overlay and the changes we're looking at making for the businesses that own tires and display them or store them outside. I'll let you get your microphone on.
We're there. Early mornings, and I'm still late getting in here because I've been in with another matter. But I would just like to say that in an effort to try to bring up the standards of a main corridor as it relates to the outside conditions, the attraction for new business coming to the area, the 23rd Street overlay has been a very lengthy process. In some respect, it's been too lengthy, but be that as it may, we have made some major progress as it relates to changing the conditions, having people to be a lot more conscious of their responsibility as business owners in the area, and consequently, there has been a rise of new businesses that has come to the area. And one of the major complaints that continues to exist is that there is an abundance of outdoor storage in areas, and one of those is tires. And a lot of that is because of the automotive shops that have existed there over a period of time and that there has never been any real controls as it relates to what can and what cannot be, you know, stored on the outside of the premises. And I'll say this, that it is a major issue in the northeast quadrant of Oklahoma City, but from my driving around Oklahoma City and especially in the south side, there is just as much of a problem there as it is in the northeast quadrant of Oklahoma City. And doing some research as it relates to storage of tires, you know, you can clearly see that if a fire ever was to start in one of those areas, it's going to be a major disaster to a lot of people. It is a serious health problem. When it rains, those tires collect water, and of course, that's setting water and settling there in those areas. It draws all type of other insects around the area, from rodents to insects, and just in a way to maintain a beautification of an area and to upgrade the beautification of the area, this has been a concern that we have looked at, and I think it has to be done in order to see a growth of businesses in the area and people not continue to say, "Well, you know, they don't keep the area up. It's rundown. You drive by, you see, you know, a ton of tires stacked on the side of a building," and so many times, they're, you know, on the furniture part of those buildings, those tires is there. And so this is by no means to try to impede on the business of individuals because I understand that there are tire sales and there are companies that have to display their tires, and we're very mindful of the fact that this is a way that they advertise the sale of tires, and so there are some perimeters in reference to, you know, when the tires can be displayed on the outside, and so that would be permitted. And this is not trying to run any small company out of business, but, you know, when I drive around and look at some of these tire companies, it's amazing to look at the difference from one tire company to the other. Some tire companies, you could never tell that they're selling tires unless you went inside the facility, and then some tires, you know, you got them from the sidewalk to the back door, and they remain there from sunup to late hours in the night. And I just think that if we're going to clean and bring up and bring the standards of businesses to the area that we're trying to attract, and we can clearly see that some of the new businesses that have come to the northeast quarter as a result of this 23rd Street overlay, in particular, the Tinker Federal Credit Union, there is a new HIS clothing store directly across the street, and so the potential for the growth is clearly there, and I just think this is an opportunity, and the time is right for us to continue to be aggressive as it relates to the upgrade of the area and instill some ordinances that will make people be accountable to the business that they conduct in the area.
Okay. One of the discussion points before you walked in was the opening of... Some of these tire stores might open at 7:00 instead of 8:00. I assume you wouldn't have a problem with adjusting it up one hour?
I don't have any problems with that, you know. I think that, you know, there are some businesses that I know where I get my tires, I mean, they open at 7:30 in the morning, so I wouldn't have any problems with amending that.
Okay, we can adjust that accordingly. Any other issues while Skip's here to discuss before... I guess we'll vote on this next week, is that right?
I believe so.
Oh, it'll be two weeks.
Next meeting.
Two weeks from today. All right, well, let's go ahead and vote on the issue. We're voting on item 8E. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8F is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. There are three items on the list. Anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8F?
Maybe I don't.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. There are six items listed. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8G? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 8H is a roadway assessment district. This is improvements that are paid for by the property owners themselves. Doesn't come along very often, but it's here today. Sam, any comments on this one?
Mayor, I don't have any problems with it, and I have not heard from anybody. I just have a few questions of staff.
Would that be...
I can see what I can do, and I'll bet you Paul Bronson will be in in a minute.
Jim, the fact... We had a paving... A smaller paving district in this area a year and a half ago just north of 63rd Street. I think it just represented a couple of property owners that owned the entire surrounding property. In this instance, it's a larger district, so there are more properties involved, and the three that have put the petition forward represent a majority of those property owners. Comes to 54 percent.
That's correct.
My question is, with the remaining property owners, is this public hearing as just today or is this the introduction and we heard in two weeks so that people that may not have been contacted would have an opportunity?
They should have been contacted. They should have been given notice, each property owner given notice that this is being formed, and so this is the hearing.
So this is it? And I presume that probably a number of these are absentee property owners as to why we probably haven't heard from any of them. On this district payback, assessments to pay back the entire cost to the city, is that over 10, 15, 20 years?
I think I'll yield to Francis on that. Francis, do you know what the term is on that?
Yes, they're normally 10 years.
10 years?
Yeah.
But they can be paid off early, earlier? I don't... Is there anybody here? I think a couple of people here have petitioned are here. Are there any protesters here today? Is the applicant here or the petitioners? Either of the petitioners here? I just... If you would, I'd just like to hear a word as to... The majority interest are represented by three of you, which is a 54 percent interest. Are you aware of other people that have been contacted or how others might have...
They have been contacted, yes, sir, by us twice, notifying them of what our plans were and asking them to join in with us. We have not heard anything back from them.
You haven't heard anything, but I haven't either, so obviously, there's no protest to this, so hearing that unless there are other questions, I'd move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8H. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8I is a review of some policies by Urban Renewal.
As we're going forward with the land acquisition for the... Primarily for the Central Park, Urban Renewal is doing their land acquisition for us, and some of their procedures and allowances for business relocation, they thought were antiquated, so they've updated those policies and relocation amounts.
All right. Any comments or questions on item 8I? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8J is our annual extension of the Dell TIF.
Maybe I don't.
Okay, we're voting on item 8J. Passed unanimously. Item 8K is a opportunity for us to revisit the Rockin' America event that's coming up later this month. Skip, you want to have a motion first to rescind the previous action?
Yes, I move that we rescind the action that was taken on this past... On last Tuesday's count.
All right, we're voting on item 8K, and that item is rescinded. Now, item 8K2. I know, Skip, you've been working with the promoters of this event to try and come up with a solution.
In an effort to... From last week, in an effort to try to understand the complete details of the event that I think that was kind of a miscommunication between all the parties prior to last Tuesday's vote, I have, based upon an invitation from the promoters, and I have responded in an effort to meet with them, and we have met, and we have had some very extensive communications and with the Oklahoma City Police Department, the Specialty Events Office, Major Hill, Major Page, the promoter, Mr. Howard Pollak, and as early as this morning, we had continued to meet to try to address issues that had been presented initially, and we have, I think, based upon our most recent conference this morning about 10 minutes ago before I came into the council, I believe we have a workable solution that will satisfy the needs of the promoters, satisfy the concerns of many citizens and businesses who have committed to participate in this program and that because of the financial, you know, output that has already been made, I think that with the attachment that you now have, that, you know, this will resolve a lot of the concerns that was initially presented. I have had an opportunity to speak with the religious... Well, with the church directly across the street. financial, you know, output that has already been made, I think that with the attachment that you now have, that, you know, this will resolve a lot of the concerns that was initially presented. I have had an opportunity to speak with the religious, well, with the church directly across the street, and fortunately, based upon the times in which the organization will present, will start, it will not conflict with their park, and it will not conflict with their services on Sunday. The other major issue was the concern of the senior citizens who utilized the Lincoln Park Recreational Facility, and we have worked out a plan for Friday, for their meals to be satisfied, for them to have access to the building for the meals that they have there on Friday and the activities they have. And so Thursday and Friday at the center has been resolved, and I would ask that we move this. But before that, I want to say that last Tuesday, it was rather a contentious issue, but that next day, I had an hour and a half meeting with the promoters at their request, and I think that, you know, in the future, there has been a lot that we can learn from this process, and unfortunately, this is something that is new to the promoters as it relates to this location. Consequently, it's new to the community, it's new to the neighborhood, and there was just some major concerns that I felt like that we had to address, and they have been amenable to that, and so I thank them for the time that they have given in reference to these changes. Some of them were major changes that they did not have factored in initially, but I think that in the interests of safety and the interests of fairness to everybody that's involved, and those individuals who could potentially be affected, that it's going to work out. And so with that, and I would ask that we move and ask for passage of the permit for the Rock America concert for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and primarily, this was an issue not about the Zoo Amphitheater, but it was about the Lincoln Park bit, using it as the midway, and one of the major concessions, that they will not have access to the park on Thursday as it relates to the band performances.
All right, and Skip, you're going to make a motion that includes this attachment?
Yes, and I would have to say, add that the attachment that you have been provided, that the attachment is part of the motion for the permit.
All right.
Be added.
Am I ready to go? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Good luck, Howard.
All right, well, on item 8L, I understand we do not need executive session?
[inaudible].
All right. Cast your votes on item 8L. Passed unanimously. Item 8M, I understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
All right, cast your votes on 8M, and it passed unanimously. Item nine is items from council. Pete, you want to get us started here?
Well, it's a public hearing on my request that Oklahoma City Community College be exempted from the requirements of that recently passed ordinance concerning outside events, outdoor seller permits. I don't know that there's anyone here to speak on it, to...
Well, there probably is going to be some discussion, I don't know, from council at some point. Would you prefer that happen today, or when this gets brought back up, or do you have...
Well, it will be brought back up in two weeks. I mean, this would be a time for anybody that's got concerns about it, obviously, especially people on the horseshoe, if you have concerns. I know Gary has them, he voiced them on introductions, so it may be appropriate time to do it, or it may be appropriate to wait until the parties are here, and I think some preliminary discussion would be worthwhile, I think, especially since it's 9:25 and we've got two hours to kill.
Give us any idea.
No, not seriously, not seriously.
Pete, you know, whether the parties are here or not, and this is broader than the community college, I mean, educational institutions, and it could be OCU or somebody else in the future, but I think, again, as I said last week, I think we learned from the revision in the ordinance for outside sales, that those items that we built into that with regards to addressing public safety, to see how that was actually happened at the Paseo Festival with regards to outside sales permit in the same area, was remarkable in the difference in safety and cleanliness and originalness of that event. And I think regardless of the fee, I think that's the concern of the community college, the fee for vendors being a not-for-profit institution, regardless of exempting that, I think it's, we need to adhere across the board to the public safety matters that we built into this and be consistent about that. The idea of a site plan for the festival that details the location of tents, storage facilities, porta-pots, lumber booths, that that be done, the adherence to the setbacks that we build into the outside sales permit, back off the sidewalk and curb, I just think those matters of public safety should be adhered to across the city regardless of who's doing it. And then the matter of the fee, exempting the fee, I think is a separate, distinct matter, and I would like those public safety matters built into this ordinance.
You know, I suspect that would be something that would be amenable to the people at the college. I do want to point out one thing, though, excuse me for stepping on your tongue, but I do want to point out one thing. This, the situation at the community college is different than any other situation for any current festival of this type that I know of. This requires no streets to be closed, it is entirely located on public property owned by a public entity on the inside. So it's different. It is different than one where you're closing streets and where you're using private property. It is unique, so I think the idea that somehow this is special treatment, it's a separate situation. It is a different situation than one where you're closing public streets and where you're utilizing private property. Now, that's not to say that some of the same concerns might not be out there, but I do think there is a uniqueness about this one that's not the same as any other one. It's not the same as the Arts Festival downtown, which closes public streets. It's not the same as Paseo, which use private property and closes public streets. This does neither.
It has a revocable permit, though. To close public streets...
I understand, but what I've heard is, we shouldn't separate, we shouldn't treat people differently. Well, different people require different treatment. I mean, that's not, that's what government is all about.
But it's exactly the same, Pete. We took this lady in Paseo on her own private property that had all of these sellers, and we put all of these conditions on her, on her own private property. If the college is having problems, the administrative nightmare of handling their size of an event with all of their people and employees and resources, can you imagine a small business owner, a single lady, that we put the same burden on, on her own private property? She didn't close the street, but yet for all of the sellers that were on her property, she had to do all of the same things that we're asking everybody else in the city to do. So I don't think it is entirely different. The magnitude of it may be different, but it's still, she had her own private lot, she had all of these vendors on there, and we made her go through all of the hoops of this new ordinance for her own private property, just like you're asking, we're asking the school to do under the same ordinance. So I don't know that it is a whole lot different. Let's let Pat get in here.
That's, Your Honor, thank you. First of all, I have a question. The permit fee we're talking about is paid by the sellers, so they are for-profit operation, but we're not doing anything for a not-for-profit operation out there, except maybe making their administration easier. I think it's bad public policy to cut out exceptions in an ordinance. The ordinance is good or the ordinance is bad. If we injure somebody because of the ordinance, we overlook the entire ordinance revise. I think we deny the school the opportunity for some safety issues that are really important. We, obviously, Pete, your point that each ordinance will affect each individual differently is exactly right. We can't write an ordinance for every specific occasion. I think it's bad public policy to begin to cut out exceptions in an ordinance because there's no stopping. The next person that comes in will have an exception, we're not the same, and I think that's a very slippery slope to begin to get on. Thank you.
But in response to that, exactly what we did, I remember Councilman Walters pointing out that we are writing an ordinance to cure a specific problem. That's exactly what we did.
And I thought it was a bad idea at the time, and I still think it was a bad idea.
And, but, so, what we've done by curing a specific, we did cure that problem. Anybody that saw the Arts Festival in Paseo this time would have to acknowledge that we, it was much better this year than it was before.
But that would mean one size doesn't fit everybody.
This ordinance didn't impact the Arts Festival at Paseo. It wasn't designed to impact them at all. It was designed to impact a private property owner having a sale on her property. She was not part of the Arts Festival, and that came out clear in all the discussions we had with both the people from Paseo and the individual lady.
Okay.
But the improvements we saw were not as a result of this ordinance.
Well, I would beg to disagree, but I guess that's why there are nine of us.
Well, and that's my, and that was going to be my point, I've got to start talking before Pete, because he always stole my stuff, but that was the point. The point was, is this would have never come up, was it not for this specific issue? So we dropped a citywide ordinance to address one specific issue in one specific location that's had a specific problem, and now it applies to everybody, even those people that didn't have a problem, and now we've created problems for them. So the frustration for me is, we sit up here, week after week, and one week we'll argue, well, it needs to apply to everybody evenly, and the next week we're making something that's a specific ordinance for a specific situation, we can't have it both ways. And I agree with you, public policy should be, it should be good enough for one, if it's good enough for one person, it should be good enough for everybody, but we don't do that. We make an ordinance for one specific problem, and it fixes that problem, and it creates a problem somewhere else. And I think that putting undue burden on somebody who has had zero problems at the community college, and now they're having all these issues, I just think that it's one of those things, maybe we should go back and just undo the ordinance, maybe that's the solution. If we don't want to make an exception, maybe we ought to just undo the ordinance.
I'll tell you what we'll do, what happens if we do that. Kenny, if we undo the ordinance, or we didn't change the ordinance, and we're now aware that Oklahoma City Community College has been operating with vendors, would they not, regardless of this ordinance, would they not now, that we're aware of it, have to be permitted for those vendors at whatever cost per vendor $35, $50?
Yes.
Brian, it didn't create that. And Pat, when you say that we didn't see improvements on the private, I thought you did.
I said the improvements at the Paseo Art Festival, which were, as I understand it, different from Kathy's sales on her property. The improvements out there were significant, but I think they are a result of the discussion that was held in this chamber right here with the promoters of the Paseo Art Festival. They were made aware of the fact that there were significant public safety issues out there, there were parking issues, and they corrected them. They did a great job, and I'm proud of what they did, and I'm very pleased with the improvement in the Paseo Art Festival. I do not think that improvement, that improvement was the direct result of the ordinance we have dealing with vendors on private property, because the Paseo Art Festival closed streets, they had no vendors on private property, their vendors were in the public property, which was proper.
Mm-hmm.
So this ordinance really didn't apply to the Paseo Art Festival. It applied to one private individual who happened to own property within the limits of the Paseo District. That was my, that was my comment.
It resulted in significant public safety improvements on that private property, and I think that's of merit anywhere we go across the city.
But that wasn't the Paseo Art Festival. That's the distinction I'm making.
Okay. Meg?
Well, I was just going to follow up and say, there were significant improvements on the private property, as well as there were on the public property. It had a positive effect, but this reverberates further than even the two things we're talking about. Dan Bremmott's been working with us on another district, the Plaza District, where we have significant public improvements that have been made in the area, and this outdoor sellers' ordinance has prohibited us using that space the way it was designed, and so we really are in a bit of a conundrum that I think is going to take some work to sort out.
And I'll say again, we made that small business owner jump through the hoops and do that, and everybody's admitting how much better it was, but yet we're talking about not making a major entity like a college follow the same thing, and that's my problem.
I think one way to resolve this might be to just have a vote in two weeks. I don't know that we're going to change people's minds or twist people's arms, so, and we can discuss it again. Yeah, Skip?
You know, first of all, when we started discussing this, I tried to hold back as much as I could, because I have a very serious passion for the college, and I remember having taught at the college, I remember how they put this together all by themselves, and how it's grown over the years to be a major, major South Side and citywide, you know, activity. But at the same time, I'm also, as Councilman Ryan was stating, that, you know, I think that we either need to have a unified policy as it relates to the sale of outdoor merchandise by those individuals who are engaged in that business, and enforce it citywide, and not wait until there is a, an activity at the college or the activity at Paseo, and then say that you're going to have stronger enforcement requirements on those individuals because they're participating in that particular, you know, business district. I think that the whole issue of our ordinance has been a nothing but lukewarm in the first place, because if it was enforced, you wouldn't have all these peddlers standing on the corners and the streets throughout Oklahoma City in every part of this city. And I would just like to see if we're going to have a permit to, for outdoor sales, that we don't wait until there is the Community College Festival or the Paseo Festival, that we go out and actually do the job of enforcing the permit sales throughout the city of Oklahoma City.
Okay. Well, to move us closer to a vote in two weeks, you want to make a motion on this item to move forward?
Today is just in the form of a public hearing. Do I need to move that the public hearing's closed?
Procedurally, we have had motions on public hearings.
I move that the public hearing be held, I guess.
And that's exact.
All right. All right. Cast your votes, and a public hearing was held. All right. Eight to one. Passed. All right. Chief, you want to move forward on items from council? Gary, items from council, everything? All right, Sam? Larry?
Yeah, real quick, City Manager, if you would, I'd like you to pass along to a couple of your department heads my sincere appreciation to Chief Bryant for the hospitality shown to me by Major Sweeney and his group at the fire station this past Wednesday. We made about 12 calls, and it was amazing. I was struck by the compassion and the skill of the firefighters. The calls that we answered that day were mostly medical, there were a couple of personal assistance calls, and then one accident, but in each case, the crew just performed just admirably, and I'd like to have congratulations passed along to the chief and to Major Sweeney. And then also to Marsha Slaughter and her staff for coming out and holding a meeting last Wednesday evening for the Windsor Hills folks who are going to be impacted by a sewer project, which will start in this month and go through the end of this year. Marsha and her staff did an excellent job answering questions, and my thanks to them for coming out. And then congratulations to Pat Myrick and the folks at Corbin Park for reenterizing their neighborhood association. They did an excellent job at their meeting, and I look forward to some great things out of the Corbin Park folks. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, Pete?
A couple of things. One is just to kind of give everybody an update on the SARDAS situation, that the city has, or the Water Trust has, through the use of commercial paper, generated the $27 million that was necessary to make the initial payment to the state of Oklahoma. $27 million that was necessary to make the initial payment to the state of Oklahoma. That money was transferred to the state. The state transferred it to the Corps of Engineers, so the purchase is, for all intent and purposes, complete. It does still await some formal approval by the Corps, I believe that we haven't received yet, but we don't anticipate that that will be long in coming. It does appear that those that are opposed to the process are laying the groundwork for We've, we're taking the steps necessary at the Water Trust level to defend that. We believe, I personally believe it is the, is the next step in the foresight that was shown 50 years ago by the leadership of this body that built the lakes and built the pipeline and did all of the things that were considered very risky and, 50 years ago, I think it's just the next step, and but we're proceeding along those lines. On a personal note, I received some very good news this last week. My granddaughter, many of you know, has been being treated for a malignant brain tumor. The doctors were unable to find any trace of it as of last week, and so she's going to go back to work doing God's work, working for DHS, helping children for DHS, and she'll start next Monday. I appreciate so much all the thoughts and prayers of everyone that's been expressed to me.
That's great.
And I know she appreciates.
Thanks, Pete.
Question for Pete on the SARDAS deal. The article in the paper would lead you to believe that the Corps, I believe they said has not received a request for, they've received the money, but they haven't received, nobody's asking for a permit. Is that true? If it is true, who should be asking for that?
Well, we've asked through, the process is you get the, we have to initially ask for the permit through the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, which has been, which has been requested. It's a bureaucracy, if you will, and that process is ongoing, but we've done everything from our viewpoint that we do, that we can do, up to and including something that I think that, we were probably the only party that stood able to do this, and that's produce that $27 million and put it in their pocket.
Okay.
But that's all moving along.
A couple of things. South Oklahoma City lost a kind of a pillar in the community. I've been involved down there a long time. Mr. Jay Bonn's passed away last Wednesday, so I just want to say my condolences to his family. And then the second thing is, Jim, at approximately Southwest Second and Broadway, as you're going southbound, going to the bridge, OGN power plant is in the right-hand side, or the transfer station on the right-hand side. In that area, there's been a lot of constructions, obviously. There's three lanes, and as you go through an intersection, there's a, the right-hand turn has to turn right, and the other two, the center lane and the far-left lane, they kind of make a jog through the intersection into, into the center and the right lane. It's almost like an S. A couple of weeks ago, I called Debbie and had her turn that over to traffic, and they went out and restriped it, but it hasn't lasted. And the problem is, is as you're going through there, the striping through the intersection is very faint, and so you have people in the center lane going straight, and you have people in the left lane trying to merge over, and it's a very kind of precarious intersection there. Basically, you're not supposed to change lanes in an intersection except for this one. And so I don't know if that's a situation where we can use better quality striping, because it seems that maybe it's just paint as opposed to actual real striping, signage, something, but there's, somebody's going to, somebody's going to have a wreck there, and it's just a really a weird intersection.
We'd be happy to take a look at that and make sure it's better delineated.
Thanks.
All right. Meg?
Just one quick thing. I really want to congratulate Eddie Walker and the Philharmonic for a fabulous concert Saturday night downtown. Lots and lots of families down there. We beat the rain, and it was a really nice evening, so thank them for, I want to just thank everybody for putting that event on.
Skip?
I would like to thank Major Hill, Major Page, and the Oklahoma City Police Staff that has worked in a last-minute call in reference to addressing the issue of the Rock America Concert and on last Friday. Much of this was created, and this morning, the final, you know, compromises was reached. And I really want to thank also the Parks Department, who was called upon again on last Friday. And so I think this is, is something that, you know, we, we have to start being a little bit more in touch with each other from department to department, and not accept something so much as a cookie sheet, you know, process, because sometimes there are, there are areas that, you know, we, we just don't address because it's just been that way. And I really want to thank the input that they have given in trying to make sure that we can come up with a workable solution for this. And the Eastern Golf Association had a fantastic golf tournament at Lincoln Golf Course this past weekend, and I talked to several of the members on Sunday, and they were very pleased with the, with the course, they were very pleased with the hospitality, and they had people that came as far as Connecticut here to play golf for a weekend in the city of Oklahoma City on our fantastic golf course.
All right. Pat? All right. City Manager reports?
Yes, there's one that I don't want to draw your attention to. I've asked Chief City to come and join us this morning. A few months ago, we had the opportunity to apply for a federal grant, it's a COPS program, to get some additional personnel, seven additional personnel, and at the time, the chief came forward and laid out a plan on how to use that personnel. Subsequent to that, we've gone through the budget process and actually eliminated some positions within the Police Department, and based upon that new set of facts, the chief thought it would be prudent to reevaluate the assignment of those personnel. So with that, chief?
With the adoption of the 2011 budget, the Police Department, as you know, had to cut 22 positions. In regard to that, we'd also received funds, if you can recall, several months back from the Department of Justice and Recovery Funds, where we set out certain projects the Police Department wanted to do. From those projects, there were, there were several things that were strictly equipment, which amounted to about over $500,000, which, in looking at that, those funds would also allow us to hire personnel or to recover those personnel if they were being cut from the budget as a result of the tough economic times. So with that $500,000, we identified seven positions that we could save from those 22, which would then result in us only having to cut 15 positions, which, as you know, are vacant, but the seven positions would be able to be restored for a period of 12 months, in hopes that maybe the economics gets somewhat better in the next budget year, then we'll be able to salvage those. You can see in the handout that we identified the seven positions that we thought were most critical to the, to the Police Department. In other words, those positions that we put back out of that 22 were positions we thought had the greatest impact to the Police Department, and it was worth putting those positions back with those, with those grant funds. And those positions were basically our Drug Court representative, derelict vehicle enforcement, our fleet manager. That may not seem like an important position, but we only have one sergeant assigned to that, and our fleet is extremely large, and it proved to us how valuable he was during the hailstorm in being able to get our cars back into operation as quickly as he was able to do, just based on his knowledge and expertise. One position with Commission on Accreditation, what that's going to allow us to do is possibly continue our accreditation. Now, we're hoping, it's not guaranteed, but we think once we, we, if we do keep that one position, it allows us to do internal staff inspections, and then also maybe continue our accreditation after our three-year period is up. Also put two positions back in drug interdiction, which is narcotics. It's a proactive undercover narcotics investigators. We did cut one lieutenant from that unit, and one lieutenant, another lieutenant's going to oversee that operation. We decided to put one lieutenant back into operations. We did cut our HIDA program with the Drug Enforcement Agency. The lieutenant in there was a temporary assigned lieutenant. The position was originally cut. We decided that position was more valuable in operations. We were actually three lieutenants, probably short, in three different divisions, and that's one way for us to, to start putting those positions back in those divisions. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. Mayor?
Yes, Pete?
Just a couple, kind of, it's one, I want to tell you, chief, that how much I personally appreciate the department's continued support for the Drug Court, and that, to me, that's the long-term solution to the drug problem. As much as it pains me to say this, it becomes obvious to me every day that we, the war on drugs is not one we're going to win. And treatment and Drug Court really is, has both assistance for the addict, but it also provides a diversion program, which makes it easier for the Department of Corrections, lots of, there are lots of things about that, that I, that I, I just want to let you know how much I personally appreciate you including that in one of the positions. Second, I have a question about this grant, that does, at the end of the year, if we can't find the $500,000 in our budget, what, do all these positions then go away again? Correct. If that's, it's basically being able to salvage those positions for a 12-month period. That funding is only for that one year. There's no, there's no hook in the grant that says if we take this money, we've got to do it the following year? No, there's not. So it is what it is? It is. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
The chief, oh, go ahead. Just a quick question, and I'm, I'm sure this has been done, but there's no problem with the federal government if I change the use of these funds?
No, we had, we had to actually apply to the Department of Justice for, as an adjustment, and they have given us formal approval to reallocate those funds.
Okay, I assume that was the case. I just wanted to hear somebody say it.
All right. Skip?
But, but based upon your, the history of the grant, has it been a consistent, have we been a consistent beneficiary of the grant program?
Well, we have of the burn grant. This burn grant's a little bit different in that it allows you, it was part of the recovery funds, federal recovery funds, which, which usually the burn grants aren't tied to those, so they can't be used for those, those positions. They use for equipment, new programs, and things like that. So that's what makes this a little bit different, that we can use that for actually personnel costs.
Okay. Any other questions for chief? All right. Thanks. Still on City Manager reports. Are we expecting a revenue report this week?
We should get, we should get sales tax check within the next few days.
Okay. All right. Yes, Skip?
To the City Manager, I was saddened to hear this, this weekend that FEMA denied the request for federal disaster.
For individual benefits for flood victims, that's correct.
Is there a process within that system to appeal that denial?
I, I looked into that. I don't know that there's an official process for appeal. We, we are working with the Governor's Office, and we're sending a letter on the Council on I's behalf, and I've also called our U.S. senators to roll up their sleeves and get more involved in this. The process is not what I've always thought it was, but we're, I, we're not just going to accept the current stances, and that, we have to continue, I think, to push this.
Well, I appreciate that, Mayor, because there's some people that absolutely have, they have nothing as a result of this, and as, as geographical as it was, you know, it's, it's a very painful thing to see the number of people that I have talked to, that this deep fork over off of Kelly and 59 just devastated some of the homes over there. And I don't know whether or not there will ever be a way of changing the course of that channel of water over there, but it's, it's becoming to be a major, major disaster to the life of these citizens that live there. And, you know, I just hope that we could do, and I thank you, Mayor, for, for your comment and reference to contacting the governor, and, you know, I'm just praying that something will change as it relates to that decision.
Me too.
I had a comment about that. One thing that I noted this, this last round of public disasters that we had, the tornadoes and the flood, is the disparity in the way the two situations were handled. And it's not from our standpoint, it's, it's a reliance on someone outside of our control. They have one set of rules for tornadoes and another set of rules for floods, and if your house is blown down, or your house is totally ruined by water, you don't really, those distinctions are lost on you. And I wonder if, as we go forward, we shouldn't be, and we've done it in other things. I mean, maps is a great indicator of what we've been able to do by focusing on, let's do it ourselves. I just wonder, as we go forward, if we shouldn't try to look more at what we can do, what Oklahoma City can do, as opposed to this continued reliance on FEMA. I'm not saying we shouldn't take the money if it's available to us, but I was, I was caught in a real trap this last time, when I had to explain to my constituents that you had to separate the junk from the trees, and they'd only pick up the trees, and you had to put the trees in small piles, and the junk wouldn't be picked up at all, except on big trash day, and in little piles, and then we do a press release that said we're going to pick everything up except building materials, we're going to pick up refrigerators and all kinds of stuff because of the flood, two totally different standards. I just think we need to be the one to decide what the standard is. I mean, we need to spend more time looking, looking inside ourselves and not, if FEMA's standard's going to treat a tornado different than a flood, it's a dumb standard. We need to, we need to come up with a standard that treats everybody that's in that situation the same, and then let, and then let government be the one that sorts out the garbage, literally and figuratively, not, not force the, someone like me to try to explain to my constituents why they can't have the same thing, but if you'd have had a flood, we could have picked that up, but you didn't have a flood, so you got to figure out some way to do it yourself. I just think that's not a good way, it doesn't, it doesn't make government look good, and it's kind of a passing the buck thing to the federal government. I mean, we've done a great job in Oklahoma City of self-reliance by taxing ourselves to build the kind of public improvements that make Oklahoma City a better place. I think if we'd look internally at disaster the same way, I think we'd be better served. I think we'd better serve our constituents.
Seems to me like we do have a specific policy dealing with disasters. I mean, you know, we're not required to go out and make special trips and to hire contractors to go out and clean up these areas, but we do so because we think it's the right thing to do. So what you're saying is maybe we need to review it and maybe accentuate it, or, we do have to follow the federal guidelines to make sure we get the reimbursement when it's possible.
Well, I guess I'm saying is, we don't look, we don't build a park downtown in a way that would get federal park money. We build it with our own money, and I think we could do the same thing, we could modify what we're doing, so we treated our, the people that vote for us, the people that pay taxes in Oklahoma City, we treated them the same. I was in a very difficult situation, and anybody, anybody whose ward would have been affected by a tornado, separate from the flood, would have seen that contrast. I'm not blaming anybody for it, it's just we were following what the FEMA would have, exactly what you said, we were doing what FEMA would reimburse. It doesn't make any difference, you're standing in your front yard and your house is blown down.
Yeah, but we don't wait for FEMA to reimburse. I mean, we get after it. I mean, we're not waiting to see if FEMA's going to accept it or not. We didn't wait on the flood.
I guess maybe you don't, maybe I'm not.
No, I think, I think what we're asking for is that we review what we do, but I guess what I'm saying is, we're already doing quite a bit on our own.
No, I agree. I agree. I agree. We do more than we're required to do.
I don't want you to infer that we just, we just rely on the federal government. We just said that's somebody else's problem, it's not ours, because I think we do proactively get out there.
In effect, that's what we did with regard to the tornado damage, vis-à-vis the flood damage. I'm not, it's not a criticism, if we weren't out there picking it up, nobody would have picked it up. So I'm glad we were out there, picking up what we could pick up. I just was struck by the fact that you can't explain that difference to somebody about why we won't pick up the refrigerator and the sofa and all that stuff if your house is blown down by a tornado, but we will pick it up if you're flooded. And that's, and that was a FEMA policy that we, we went along with, that was impossible to make somebody in that other situation understand why that made sense, and I'm, I'm saying that we ought to look at that.
If I could just comment on that for a second. I agree with what Mr. White has said, that we need to review that, that policy. The difference between a flood and tornado is personal insurance, and with the flood, there was not personal insurance that came in, so we feel...
And with the flood, there was not personal insurance that came in, so we filled the gap between what your insurance would provide and what it doesn't provide. And we tried to do the same thing on a tornado. On a tornado, generally, under most policies, that they're paid, that there is reimbursement for the removal of the construction debris that occurs with the event. And I know that's very difficult to explain to a citizen, and I know we will review that policy, Mr. White. But the reason that comes forth is because the difference of what an insurance company will cover in a tornado versus what an insurance company will cover during a flooding event.
Well, at the risk of bringing reality to what I considered a joke a while ago about making this last 11:30, I still have to make one more comment. And that is, you're rewarding people that don't have insurance by doing that policy. That policy doesn't make sense to me. I do appreciate, I do feel sad about that, that's a bad situation. But when you talk about, here's somebody that's got insurance who goes, say, well, you've got to realize, you've got to do this, you've got to do that, they've taken money out of their pocket to buy insurance, here's somebody else that the insurance is available to, they just haven't bought it. And so we're going to fix that. I just, I think a better, more uniform policy. I mean, the policy might be to raise cane with everybody that doesn't have flood insurance, and maybe that's a way to do it. But something has got to, I just, I wouldn't want any of you to have been in the situation I was in, when I was the only ward that was hit by the tornado. I had to explain to people why the flood was being handled differently. That's not a fun situation to be in.
Yeah, I'm sure it wasn't.
At the risk of sounding like I'm defending FEMA, which I am not, I have sit in enough meetings and classes under FEMA throughout my years to suspect I know what the difference is. And you can't predict where a tornado is going to hit, you just can't. They could hit anywhere at any time. You can predict where it's going to flood. And that's what the FEMA flood maps are for, and that's why we adopt the FEMA flood maps from time to time, and they go in and they look at elevations, and they look at buildings, and they look at all that kind of stuff, and they predict where it could possibly flood when you have that 100-year flood or whatever it is that they come around to. So I suspect if you push FEMA hard enough, they'd say that's the difference in how they handle a flood and how they handle a tornado. You can't predict where a tornado is going to hit.
Okay.
Gary? Oh, go ahead. I want to comment, a lot of the houses that were damaged in my ward were outside the 100-year flood plain. And there was no requirement that they have flood insurance by their mortgage company or common sense. One person lived there for 60 years on the creek bank, and it's the first time they've had flooding problems there. We had a 500-year flood, and I think that we need to be careful that we don't react, overreact. And there's serious problems out there, I'm not trying to minimize that at all, but we need to realize that we've designed a system within the city for 100-year floods. If we have in excess of that kind of rain, we're going to have problems. And the decision is, we want to design a system to handle an occurrence that it might occur once every 500 years, as opposed to the system we've got. And I think it's a question we need to review. And I think Pete's dilemma is one I shared, I had to try to explain to a flood victim why we would pick up his water-soaked sofa and not pick up his water-soaked wallboard that he tore off to prevent his house from getting mold. And we overcame that, and I want to compliment the city staff on the willingness to make that change, and we did go out there and pick that construction debris after the flood. But there is a distinction, and I think we need to recognize and not overreact to a situation that only occurs very, very frequently.
Go ahead, Skip.
You know, one of, and maybe Gary can answer, is when they talk about this 100-year flood zone, are they talking about one flood in 100 years in that particular area?
Hydraulically, it's done on what historically rainfall events have been and the intensities of rainfalls over the records, they plot it out, and they do statistical analysis as what would be the worst flood in 100 years, and that's what they come up with.
Well, it was really kind of strange. One of the citizens that's in my ward that was affected primarily off of 59th and Kelly, this lady, the meeting that we had last week, she brought a letter from her insurance company that was dated March 11th and said that she was no longer in a flood zone area, and therefore the insurance was being stopped as far as the escrow account on her mortgage. And then she gets flooded. And it's, if they can predict that much, then maybe they need to go back to the drawing board in reference to where this water's coming from. And I just got some questions as it relates to, and I think we'll have to address that later on, as it relates to some of these, the movement of water in some of these areas of Oklahoma City that the Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction over.
Okay. Any other comments on this before we move closer to retirement? All right. We have citizens to be heard, I'll ask them to keep their comments to three minutes. Richard Fisher?
Good morning, Richard, we will need your name and address for the record, please. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. My name is Richard Fisher, 4308 South Anderson Road, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73150. And I'm here today on behalf of a violation that I got issued on 2115 West Park Place, and it says that I had, basically it's Chapter 35, Section 103, line, junk debris, trash, and other stuff on the property. And I feel, I was sent a letter requesting a hearing in the case because, I feel that the property where there was, I did not allow, nor did I grant anyone permission to put any debris or junk or trash on the property. And so I wrote to them and I said, if I come down there and had a meeting with a couple of the gentlemen from the Code Enforcement Superintendent of the Department of Services and Attorney of the Mucifer Council's, and hearing on, that was on the 29th of June, and I went in there and I talked to several gentlemen, one was right there sitting at the bench right there today, and I explained to them, I said, you know, I did not allow that, and I feel that it was junk debris. I even showed them an article from Oklahoman that dated on the 23rd of June, just like y'all was talking earlier about, contractors pick up debris. Contractors for Oklahoma City will immediately begin collecting debris such as wallboard, la, 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 la. And this was dated on the 23rd of June, seven days, approximately seven days after I got my notice, and I feel there was junk debris, that most of it, I cannot say all of it was from the storms, you know, just like no one can say that it all was not from the storms. There's no way of knowing that, because you know how devastating the storms are. But, and at the meeting, the gentlemen sat there and they said, well, we cannot, we cannot actually make a decision, we're just the enforcers. You know, so I questioned, enforcers for the people or to the people? Obviously to the people, because they did not represent me, and even on the sheet, there's not a block that says that the people are in the right, you know, and I, and, you know, at this time, and the economy's low, and we're laying off other enforcers such as our police and our firemen that are here to protect and serve the people, I feel like, you know, they're wasting my time for that hearing, just like, and sorry, no disrespect intended, but, you know, I have a job and I had to take off for that day on June 29th, I'm obviously having to take hours off my vacation time to come in here today in front of the City Council. But not only that, even regardless of that, then the gentleman in question, I cannot read their signature here, but one of them's here today, another one was here earlier, and they gave me the number to Charles Lombardi, and I called him, and he said, well, I'm an enforcer as well, so I cannot help you, so you need to call Lori Yates, the city attorney. So I called her office two times, on one time one day and another time another day, and left a message, what it was about, and basically her recording says that, you know, give you a court date, which I don't have a court date, you know? And, because I want to get this handled upfront besides have to handle it after the infraction's already been, after I've been penalized by a fine or other violations of the city ordinance and codes. So I would, I'd like to recommend that the city, as y'all were talking earlier, and I do thank you for picking up the storm debris, I know you're not contracted to do that, and I know you do that as a service to the people, and I do thank you very much for that, but I feel like this is part of the debris that should be picked up by the city from the storms in early May and early June.
Okay. Richard, do you have any documentation on your specific, do you have any copies of anything that you can leave with us?
Yes, sir, I have copies there.
Yeah, can you just leave that with me?
Yes, sir.
All right, I appreciate you coming down, too.
Thank you, City Council. God bless you.
Fannie Bates?
Hello, my name's Fannie Bates, I live at 701 Northeast 15th Street, I'm 60 years old, I'm a teacher. I haven't heard anybody on this panel thank Barack Obama and Congress for sending us $10 million for public transit, but you may have done it when I wasn't here, but I really appreciate the fact that the President of the United States and Congress sent us $10 million for transit. And I think the reason they sent it was because they know that Oklahoma City has one of the lousiest public transit systems of any major city in the United States, and they knew it needed to get better. And I believe that they sent us that money so we could make our public transit center a system better. And I've been riding the bus most of the time for the past month, and I don't know, one bus was either eight minutes early or 52 minutes late, I don't know which. There have been buses, I've been talking to people on the bus with me that said that their bus had broken down and they were, they were late for work because their bus broke down. One man said his bus broke down twice in one day. Some of the buses I have ridden are packed, and y'all think we don't need any more buses? We need more buses. We've got people in this town that need a bus to get to work or to get to the doctor or get where they need to go. I read in the news that our mayor said that every family in Oklahoma City had a car. I don't know what city mayor's talking about. He must think he's the mayor of Nichols Hills. In the neighborhood he lives in, everybody might have a car, but in my neighborhood, every family does not have a car. There are thousands of families in Oklahoma City that do not have a car and depend on public transit, and that money needs to be spent where it needs to be spent. It does not need to be spent on some pie in the sky silly thing that we don't want. We do not want riverboats. We do not want some silly little thing that's only going to appeal to the yuppies downtown. The people that need the transportation are out in the edges of town, out in the historically black community, the bus system is pretty bad. There are very few buses on Saturday in the historically black part of town. And I know that this council that's sitting here now is not totally personally responsible for all the racial discrimination that has happened in the past, but you know there's been a huge amount of racial discrimination against that part of the city in the past, and things need to be done to bring that part of the city up to where it's supposed to be, to make up for the racial discrimination that has happened in the past. And one of those things is, we need a better transit system in the northeast quadrant. Thank you.
Yeah, and word, Jerry?